We ready to go, Patrick?
The the stream is starting right now. I'll say when it's uh it's gonna be live here in just a few seconds.
Okay.
All right, it's live.
Good evening, I call to order the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Commissioners' regular session. In accordance with Section three of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, the clerk will note that for the record, this meeting is being conducted remotely via Zoom pursuant to a local declaration of emergency adopted by the Board of Commissioners on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, and extended on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. All members are attending remotely and with video activated. During the roll call, each member will indicate if they are currently located in Calhoun County, or if not, the county, city, village, township, and state from which they are attending a meeting remotely. Madam Clerk, will you please take role and record in the minutes the location of each member?
Do your meeting.
Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Present, Homer Township.
Commissioner Kathy Sue Petty.
Here. Newton Township, sorry. There we go.
Commissioner Rochelle Hatcher.
Present, Battle Creek, Michigan, District two.
Commissioner Jake Smith.
Present, Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Steve Frisbee.
Present, Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Derek King.
Present, Suresco, Michigan.
Commissioner Tommy Miller.
Present, Moringo.
We have four.
Motion. All right. Uh after after a moment of silence, Commissioner Tompkins will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Commissioners' regular session agenda as presented?
So move, move.
Support Hatcher.
Miller and Hatcher, is there any discussion?
Uh yes, Commissioner Fair. Commissioner Smith, um I wanted to make you aware of a potential conflict of interest as an employee of uh South Dakota Michigan Behavioral Health who is on the consent agenda tonight. I've spoken with Jim and I think he can elaborate more on the issue. I don't think there's an actual conflict there, but I want to bring it to the board's attention.
That's an appointment to a board?
Uh that's the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, yep, okay. So noted. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular session and the Board of Commissioners' February nineteenth?
So move, Tompkins.
Support, Smith.
Tompkins and Smith, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Petty.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is citizens' time. During citizen's time, the board chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the board. A person recognized by the chair shall call in and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for citizens' time and on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The chair shall control the length of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes and shall not allow negative personal comments. Please mute your TV or computer when calling in as the background sound will generate feedback. Please note there's an approximately thirty-second delay between the live meeting and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners tonight? Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? We'll wait a few minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? Patrick, anybody in the queue?
No, sir.
Okay. Wait about another thirty seconds. All right, we'll move on. Are there any elected or appointed county officials who would like to comment tonight? Our two attendees with their hands up, it is Prosecutor Gilbert.
Hi there, good evening. Uh you know, Judge Halcy pointed out a couple of days ago that we've gone up almost an entire year without one jury trial in circuit court, and it's our understanding courts are opening up. Uh we will be doing our first trial March twenty-nine. That's all I have for you.
Good news. Melinda Weaver from the Treasurer's Office.
I just wanted to let you guys know that we forfeited on about one thousand two hundred properties this year, and it's down about one hundred and forty-eight from last year. And then we are starting settlement with the local units, and I've had two come in already, and they both said that they were very surprised, but um they had more people pay at the local unit so far than they have in the last few years. So I thought that was kind of interesting that they're paying at the local level. But we're still working on foreclosure. We're down to like six hundred and some properties and staff are calling every single property owner if we can find a phone number. So that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on. We have a special order of business. Um it's gonna be read into the record by Commissioner Tompkins.
Excuse me, thank you Chair, this is a proclamation proclaiming March twenty-twenty-one as the nineteenth annual March for Meals Month. Whereas on March twenty-second, nineteen seventy-two, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five and established a national nutrition program for seniors sixty years and older where and whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March two thousand and two to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the twenty-twenty-one observance of March for Meals celebrates nineteen years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and home-delivered, in Calhoun County have served our communities admirably for over fifty years. And whereas volunteers for the Meals on Wheels programs in Calhoun County are the backbone of the program, and they're not only delivery of nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also carrying concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Calhoun County provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the county that help them maintain their health, independence, and thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Calhoun County provide a powerful opportunity for social connection for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effect, health effects, excuse me, and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Calhoun County deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic and will continue to provide to local communities, our state, and our nation long after it is over. Now therefore, we, the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-one as the nineteenth annual March for Meals Month and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National Twenty-Twenty-One March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. This will be dated the fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-one, signed by our Chair, Steve Frisbee of the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for that opportunity.
I have a motion to approve the proclamation.
So move, Tompkins.
Support Betty.
Hatcher.
Tompkins and Betty. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Of seven yes.
Motion carries. We also have Abigail Finn here tonight to accept this proclamation. Abigail, would you like to say anything tonight?
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity and just for the recognition. You know, we have really relied on our staff and our volunteers this year to carry a much larger workload. Um just with the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we had so many individuals who became homebound for the first time or who were looking to us instead of going to the grocery store. So in Calhoun County specifically, we've added an additional volunteer route. Um and this kind of came at an interesting time for us where many of our volunteers are seniors themselves. So um we recruited a lot of new volunteers and met a lot of new people in our community. Um so I just really want to share, I put in the chat, we do have a live event this year just to kind of recognize our staff and volunteers and everything that they've done in the past year. Um we also are really encouraging um state and local officials. If you could send a video just for your support to us, um there's instructions that were emailed out to you on how to do that. I'll leave my contact information below as well, but um just really want to echo that the volunteers have been critical in keeping our program operating um and that the need is still great for our program. So um we're so lucky to be funded by a senior military in Calhoun County, which is allowing us to continue to meet this need. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Abigail.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right. And we will um if we could, we'll promote that um link as well to the rest of the commissioners. If we can get that in an email, that'd be great. Okay, consent agenda, we're gonna move on. We have five items on the consent agenda. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda of the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Commissioners' regular session as presented.
So move, Betty.
Support, more.
Betty and Miller, is there any discussion? And Commissioner Smith, you're gonna refrain from voting in this due to your conflict, correct? Okay.
I'll do what our counsel says.
Well, he doesn't have to just pull that item off if he's gonna abstain from that item and vote on all the rest.
He could. Uh Jim, what do you think? If I may.
Mr. Chair, I believe that it's it's appropriate for um for Commissioner Smith to vote on the consent agenda items. The whole purpose of the consent agenda is it's to to address issues that should not be uh should not be controversial in any sense, and this is certainly fits in that category. It does not involve a monetary issue. It could not increase uh in any way um the money that is received by Commissioner Smith's employer. And if he feels like he cannot vote on that, it could be removed. But I don't see that it's a conflict at all, and if it is, it would be de minimis and not worth uh worth recusing if he if he so choose, but it's really up to him or the commission uh to uh to deal with that. But I would recommend that it not it not be considered a conflict because of the nature of the the resolution.
Commissioner Smith, what's your wishes?
I'm fine leaving it on the consent, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, thanks, Jim.
All those of, well, Madam Clerk, take the role, please.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Special Committee and Workshop Board reports, anybody?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Commissioner Tompkins.
Thank you, sir. Uh just one this evening, uh the Calhoun County Economic Development Corp. met February twenty-third. Uh we approved the election of our officers, as well as we obviously is, it's been a big issue, certainly correct, uh not only locally, but also regionally and nationwide is certainly the lack of broadband in Calhoun County specifically. Uh we also discussed the proposed federal stimulus funding package, if and when that were to be approved and how that potentially, how it could be spent. So just uh actually just getting that uh the EDC off the ground, if you will, and starting to uh get to meeting again because it had been, I believe, two thousand nineteen since it had last met. So just a few things there this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else today?
Chair Frisbee.
Commissioner Betty.
Hello, thank you very much. Um on February twenty-fifth, Summit Point, um our CEO, Jeannie Goodrich, um hosted a, it was a Zoom meeting um for a new program that we voted in a while back. I want I want to say that we did it in like two thousand and seventeen. Um but it's referred to as stepping up, and it's in conjunction with our CIT program, our Crisis Intervention Team, um Sheriff Hinckley, Judge Decanet, Chief Blacker. And it is to understand and reduce the jail time that is overall that is overall that our residents um overall serve. And so we got the first look at the data that is put together by Wayne State University and um that it that was collected in our jail or around our jail um and analyzed. And so this is forming a stakeholders group to go over the results and develop um some of the information around that and looking at the bigger picture and the intercepts of the strategies of intervention. And in the brief evaluation that we had on February twenty-fifth, it looks like so far about a third of our individuals that are enter our jail system um report to have some sort of a serious mental and/or a co-addiction, um meaning like they would most likely qualify for, say, drug court and um community mental health court. So that's what this is um, you know, gonna work on. Megan Taff from Summit Point, uh who is over our CIT program and our Recovery Center and our Urgent Care, she's phenomenal, so she's had a big hand in this. And our TCC Coordinator, Nicole DuPont, who's also from Summit Point. Um and then there were several other individuals um at the meeting, so I shall keep you updated. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hopefully, you're all settling into your new assignments and appreciate all of you accepting them. All right, new business, I'm gonna, we don't have any unfinished business or old business. I'm gonna turn it over to County Administrator Controller Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start with on just a pandemic response update as it relates to county operations. So on March second, two days ago, we received a new state order regarding masks and gatherings. It did uh relax the restriction on indoor gatherings a little bit to limit uh non-residential venues to twenty-five persons. It also continues to reference the emphasis on the Myosha Emergency Rules issued back in October. Um both of these together um are scheduled to be in effect through the middle of April. And so um we are, at this point, continuing to message to our employees and and to you that our recommendation is that remote work will continue at least through April, remote meetings, virtual meetings through April. And our Assistant County Administrator Brad Wilcox and our facilities and IT staff are definitely um working on the possibility of bringing more people back into the building and making sure that when our commission can um meet again in person, that we're um set up for distancing. And we have the new um audiovisual system in the commission chambers. And so we'll be scheduling a time for you all to be, get a little quick training on that operation. As I mentioned before, the voting will be done electronically and simultaneously, which is a little different than our traditional roll call vote. So that is in process. Also, um just this week, the state um added to the eligible persons list for vaccines. Um anyone over fifty with underlying medical conditions from now through March twenty-second, and then anyone over fifty regardless of any underlying conditions after that. So Eric Pesel is is here tonight. He he and his staff have done a tremendous job in continuing to adapt their strategies and their plans to these ongoing changes uh coming down from from the federal government and from the state. So with that, we will be messaging to our employees um uh early next week that um except for the sheriff's office so far, county employees are deemed in what we've been calling Phase One C. So that has not been uh deemed an eligible category yet for for countywide employees to be vaccinated. So we'll encourage anyone over fifty with underlying conditions or anyone over fifty um starting at the end of March to use what is coming up, which is a lot more widespread options available. And the Health Department is working on an online scheduling feature that should be launched next week to instead of using a call center like we did for the senior clinics, be able to schedule, to be able to get on a waitlist through the county website and then be called back to schedule or electronically notified to schedule those appointments for at some point, anyone over fifty and over. And then um our employees that are under fifty will continue to figure out the strategy for prioritization of those different phases. So it's kind of become a two-track um methodology where it's partly age-based, it's partly industry-based when it comes to the vaccine. Um I'm told that the senior waiting list for those over sixty-five is almost down to nothing after we get through this week's mass vaccination clinics. And so that is our operational update. And then I have a couple more updates from boards and committees. The Summit Point Board, um just to follow up on Commissioner Betty's report, the Summit Point Board Directors' Mark met on March second. And the big, one of the big focus items right now is that the um State Department of Health and Human Services is working with all community mental health associations to try to create a consistent costing model for our services. So it's a a a big burden on our finance and administration, but ultimately, the goal is to try to better understand how all of the agencies are tracking their costs for serving customers and accounting for them so that um the dollars can be best leveraged to to serve our consumers. And then, of course, the the brand-new uh building that is scheduled to open on March twenty-second, the new twenty-four-hour psychiatric care facility. The um Marshall Marshall Area Economic Development Alliance Board met on March second. We adopted the last year's audit and more importantly, were able to adjust the budget budget to the positive because we originally adopted a budget that started July first that included uh some pretty big reductions in revenues, mainly from hotel accommodations tax um and membership dues. And the budget is tracking um more favorable than than the original plan. So Meta is doing a wonderful job with our new CEO, Jim Durian, to continue to increase those uh support for the businesses' impact by COVID-nineteen restrictions in downtown Marshall, uh to continue to figure out ways to bring tourists to Marshall's downtown, even um in pandemic situations, and to continue to market the available um land within the Marshall area for future commercial and industrial development. And then finally, Commissioner Tompkins mentioned our Economic Development Corporation talked a lot about the broadband initiative. Um I mentioned that during our commissioner's orientation on February nineteen, and a lot has happened since then. Commissioner Tompkins and Commissioner Smith um both expressed a willingness to participate in that ongoing discussion. And so we've had a couple of meetings this past week where um we're at a point where the the Battle Creek um group called the Digital Equity Coalition, kind of a grassroots effort, is asking if the county would be willing to step up in a more formal leadership role to help continue the next steps to to get the effort to to provide internet access to all county residents into um more of a a formalized plan where we can seek funding and enact studies to make sure that we understand the data and the gaps um and then move forward with that. So hopefully, for the March eighteen board meeting, I'll be bringing forth some recommendations toward that initiative. Uh we need some, uh just to really get the formal support of the Board of Commissioners for the initiative in general, just to qualify under the state's Metro Act guidelines for moving forward for potential funding. And then um we're going to recommend that the county commission a task, a broadband task force so that we can have, again, some structure to this leadership. So uh more to come on that, it's it's exciting. And the Coalition itself has already raised enough funds from community stakeholders to pay for the initial uh survey of broadband access that's currently in place. That will conclude my report. So we can move on to the new business tonight. We just have three items, the first being twelve B one. Um this is the annual request for your approval of the Native American Heritage Fund Board Administrative Services Agreement. This provides fifteen thousand dollars to the county's general fund to offset time that I spend along with Sue Connelly on just providing support, financial support, banking, coordinating the audit, coordinating the grant uh award process for the five hundred thousand dollars that comes out of the state's portion of our casino's net win payment every year. So we're getting ready to start that grant application process shortly this year. The board re-elected the same officers, so our Nato Asapi here on Band of Potawatomi Board Chair Jamie Stock is also the Chair of this board. There are a couple individuals that are appointed by uh the governor and in the state of Michigan. And so we're getting ready to kick off the the new round of funding this year and I'm happy to report that the board is um willing to be partners again with the county to provide the administrative services. The board did meet on February twenty-six and approved this agreement, and so we ask for your approval to finalize it tonight.
Right, can I have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one Native American Heritage Fund Board Administrative Services Agreement as presented?
Hatcher. Support Hatcher.
Y'all jumped in there. So that will be uh Smith and Miller.
I think I was the only person who didn't say. So I don't want the record to reflect negatively.
It was Hatcher and Miller then. Hatcher and Miller then. Sorry. It was a jumbled mess, but it was good. Any discussion?
At least we're paying attention.
Yes. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
We have seven yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, 12B2, is a request for your approval of an amendment to our current medical services contract for jail inmates with Horizon Health. And this is kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Betty's report on the stepping up initiative. There is a really helpful coordinated effort going on in our community and a lot of communities across the state and across the nation to improve mental health services for those incarcerated and, you know, to be more proactive with trying to make sure that when they get out of jail, those that continuity of service continues. So this specific piece of that is just a requirement that we really need to have a different approach to providing mental health professional services within the county jail. We previously contracted with Summit Point, which was successful. We're now really looking for a higher level of service that includes weekends and that's really not, doesn't fit into Summit Point's staffing and and budget model. And Horizon was more than willing to help us out with a slight increase, less than $20,000 a year, to add another part-time mental health professional to the services that they already provide within the jail. So Sheriff Hinckley is recommending this. Our Corporation Council has reviewed it. And the the contract is generally managed through our facilities management by Brad Wilcox, our Assistant County Administrator. And so we've attached the entire contract, the proposed amendment, and it's really just a simple one that is expected to be offset by expense savings elsewhere than the sheriff's current budget allocation and should not require an additional general fund appropriation for this year.
Can I have a motion to approve the inmate medical contract amendment as presented?
Don't move Betty.
Support Smith.
Betty and Smith, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Final item in our new business tonight, item 12B3, comes as a recommendation from our Health Department. Health Officer Eric Pesel is here to speak on on behalf of the department and also the Board of Health, who is also expressed support of this. And we are requesting the waiver by the Board of Commissioners of the collection of fees within the Health Department Special Revenue Fund for this year's annual restaurant licenses, campground inspections, and pool inspections. So most importantly, aimed at reducing the administrative financial burden on our food service industry, who has been and continues to be impacted by COVID-19 restrictions and having to operate at reduced capacity. And so this is in recognition that, you know, if the county is in the position through other funding and through the fund balance that the Health Department has, that we want to do our part in just providing that relief to businesses throughout Calhoun County. And the estimated relief is totaled at about $288,000. So I would invite Eric Pesel to add to that and then, of course, be available to answer any questions. So Eric?
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, I think the only thing I would add is this is just a continuation of of how we how we look at ourselves as not only regulators, we're also partners with our various businesses that that, you know, by law, we have to inspect, but that doesn't mean that that we aren't in this altogether. So I think this is just a good example of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Can I have a motion to approve the waiver of the 2021 food licenses and other inspection fees as presented?
Don't move Tompkins.
Support Hatcher.
Tompkins and Hatcher, is there any discussion?
Yes, please, Chair.
Please go.
Thank you. I, so one of my new assignments, which I am enjoying and getting my feet wet on, is the Health Board. And I just wanted to point out that, you know, Eric does an awesome job, him and his team. These were discussions that were happening, you know, and and looking at what other places are doing. But really, we got to give some big credit to Kelly here. She was on the Board of Health meeting. That's not something that she is always in those meetings. I think that's one of the nice things I think about having some of these virtual meetings. She's able to attend more, I would think, even though she does do a lot, but she really brought this to a real, you know, right to the right to a head. And she really really deserves some credit for this as well. Not taking anything away from Eric and his staff, of course, they're having these conversations, but Kelly brought it up and 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 really drove the conversation. So great job to her.
Any other discussion? I I would add, you know, we've made motions and passed resolutions in support of our business owners, and this really puts into action what our intent was with those resolutions. So kudos to Kelly and Eric and Bridget and the staff for making this an effort for us to consider, and I hope everybody considers it a great thing. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
We have seven yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is citizens' time. The same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your time to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Please mute your TV or computer when calling in. As the background sound will generate feedback. Please note that there's an approximately 30-second delay between the live meeting and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? Anybody in the queue, Austin? Or Patrick, I'm sorry.
No, sir, no one in the queue.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? All right, we'll move on. Commissioner time. Any commissioners have anything tonight?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Commissioner Tompkins.
Thank you, sir. Bring this forward with a little bit of, I don't know, sadness, but yet a little bit of rejoicing. As most of us know, Michigan's oldest resident, which lives right here in Battle Creek, you're right in Battle Creek, Ellen Goodwill, who had just celebrated her 114th birthday on February 2nd, and as a matter of fact, I think I might have mentioned it in our February meeting. In that recognition, unfortunately, she passed away on Tuesday at a Advantage Living Center in Battle Creek after spending more than 20 years at that facility. You know, as being as being on the senior allocation, village allocation committee, I've had the pleasure of being able to meet a lot of people, a lot of seniors, and really, really some admiration, certainly, of the folks and what an absolute treasure Ms. Goodwill certainly was. These two years ago at the Cincinnati Luncheon, I had an opportunity to sit down and speak with her for a few minutes. And what an absolute gem that she she was, and certainly condolences to those in her family. And she certainly made her mark and will leave a wonderful legacy and just what a what a one. Like I said, some sadness, but yet a bit of a rejoicing, certainly this evening in recognition of Ms. Ellen Goodwill. Rest in peace. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tompkins. Anybody else?
Chair Frisbee.
Commissioner Betty.
Hey there. I volunteered again today at a vaccination clinic at the Crossroads Church in Marshall. And once again, I mean, run very, very well. This is, and Eric can correct me, or Derek can if I'm, or Kelly, if I'm saying this wrong, but so this was Oakland Hospital nurses and then Carla Fales from Carol Services and a lot of volunteers from the county and from Crossroads Church. And I believe the vaccinations, the vaccinations actually came from Calhoun County and then through Oakland Hospital. So it was really, really well attended. And and as Kelly said, we're starting to get to, it feels like the tail end of the seniors. So everyone's so thankful and just, these are just great, great events.
Thank you. Eric, if you're still there, do we have a ballpark figure of how many people we have vaccinated in the county so far?
According to the state dashboard, it's over 30,000 doses for Calhoun citizens have been given. Of course, it's most of it's a two-dose regiment, so you know, do the math, but over 30,000 now.
That's awesome. Good job. Any other?
I would like to take the time to to, yes, to thank Eric and commend the the Calhoun County. They are the Health Department. I work with Eric. As you know, you were there with me also too, you and Kathy Sue, but we were at the church up, I'm sorry, we were at Washington Heights, I'm sorry, we were at Washington Heights last night, and we will be at Marinatha tomorrow again, doing another vaccination clinic. So I got nothing but just good kudos from everyone on the organization and how well it went, and and the staff there was wonderful. So we're getting the vaccines out there and getting them in the arms, and that's what's important.
And to follow up on it, the outreach of going into the community in different areas is really important as we reach into these communities that may have difficulty traveling, you know, plenty of distance and things like that. So we appreciate Eric and this staff reaching out.
It's been wonderful. So thank you, Eric, again.
And I will say, because I just thought of this, because you had mentioned this before, Rochelle, we actually had a couple of people come through today that were deaf and they had people who signed to help them come through. So I mean, they're they're figuring out all the barriers to get this done. Kudos to the Health Department. Thank you.
Back one.
Anybody else tonight? I'll take the opportunity to tell you, I had a conversation, albeit very short, with Joel Fulton regarding our last action to waive the fees. And he was sharing that amongst the business owners in Calhoun County that would potentially be affected. And he got back some really good comments as well. So glad we were able to take that action tonight. Anybody else? All right, claims payable. Can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County Claims Payable of February 12th, 2021 through February 25th, 2021, in the amount of $3,201,571.50 as presented?
Don't move Miller.
Support.
Miller and Smith, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
We have seven yes.
Motion carries. Are there any announcements tonight? All right. This meeting is a